Julie, roll call please. Mayor Coleman?
Present.
President Pro Tem Mahler?
Present.
Councilor Dave Trask? Councilor Lisa Gorley?
Present.
Councilor Angelita Sanchez?
Here.
Councilor Dylan Richards? Councilor Josh Thorstedt? We have five present and two absent. Councilor Trask did let me know that he's on a family vacation in Florida, and Councilor Richards is at an interview. They both asked to be excused. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call, Julie, please. Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
President Pro Tem Mahler?
Yes.
Councilor Gorley?
Yes.
Councilor Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilor Thorstedt? Moving on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda has both a minutes from the last meeting, but also a request for council action on patrol canine quote and purchase. I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Julie, will you call for a vote, please? Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
President Pro Tem Mahler?
Yes.
Councilor Gorley?
Yes.
Councilor Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilor Thorstedt?
Yes.
Okay, we have five ayes and no nays. The motion passes. Recognition of visitors and hearing of petitions. We have a few things that are happening, and first of all, we have a swearing in of... Yeah? Yes, let's do the other one first. Okay, I'm excited for that one, too.
There we go. All right, thank you. So this is something that we wanted to take care of in one of our past council meetings, but we weren't able to. So we'd like to go ahead and take a moment now, and we'll put that lower. All right, but can you still hear me? Okay, there we go. So we would like to take another moment to recognize our former mayor, Mayor Mahler. And so Mayor Mahler served as mayor for 16 years and saw the city of Sweet Home through many very challenging years. As mayor, he provided guidance through COVID. The city hall remodel maintained an excellent budget, and including paying cash for city hall and other items. He helped evacuate the surrounding areas during the fires and has served for 25 years on the fire department, or fire district, excuse me. And he has always come through quickly when signing checks and helping the city manager with various tasks. And as well as providing support, and I have to say that even in the short time that I have been here, our former mayor stepped up numerous times. He stopped middle of busy workdays, family outings, et cetera, to come and help us out. And he was even our last minute Santa when we needed one. And so Councilor Mahler has dedicated his life to serving this community. And so we wanted to give this small token of appreciation. And we're hoping to give this to him, but it took a while to give this. So if everybody could just join me one last thank you. Thank you, and thank you, Madam Mayor, in allowing me to have that moment.
Well, thank you. That caught me way off guard. It was an honor to be your mayor, and it's been a... I'm back with my family. It's an honor to serve this community. Community's always giving back to us, and I think it's just fair enough I was giving back. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Mahler, for your service and for being the pro tem now, but we do appreciate you. So thank you, City Manager Young, for getting that ready as well. Now we can move on to the next fun thing for this evening. We're having a swearing in of a new captain.
All right, Captain Cummings, please join me up front. All right.
And Ryan, I would like to thank you as well. You went through a competitive process, and I'm looking forward to serving alongside with you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Captain Cummings. Okay. Moving on. Recognition of visitors and hearing petitions. I believe we have somebody that would like to come forward to speak. We do have a full agenda tonight, so if you can keep it to three minutes. Nancy, I'll need your name and your address for the record.
We have rats. Person who lived right behind them has the... The rats have been infiltrating the neighborhood. We had one. Downstairs. There's two, six people. I do not know what they're... Sure than these garbage sacks piled in the carport. Perhaps backyard. I don't know. Safety hazard. We have been dealing with this quite a while. We are told that there's no need to clean up them. We are told that we're supposed to... But we have been... I've been dealing with... This bad. We don't know how much we... This is going to... There are D codes. Piled up. Ash vehicles. The carport. Person with camp out. We are told there is... An alternative. There is a way to enforce those.
Thank you, Nancy. The three minutes is up, but can I also review some of the things that I know are in process right now, which government takes a lot longer than any of us would like to take. So I know that the RV ordinance did pass, and it passed unanimously, but there's still some further ordinances that we have to pass tonight in order for those to take in full effect regarding our signage for the RV parking. So that's part of the issue that we are struggling with, is discovering these things that we need to implement. But also, just so you note, so you know that we're trying to take this seriously, but I just want you to know, we appreciate you coming when you come, because it keeps it in front of our faces. But I'd like to review the things I just learned even today about what's been able to happen regarding this property that I don't know if you've been informed of, okay? Okay. Well, it may have happened a while ago, and I just learned about it myself. So... So obviously, there's been years of issues that you've brought to our attention, and we appreciate that. We do have one more ordinance that is going to address signs tonight, and another ordinance that needs to take effect for codes that we're going to be voting on a second time. We have to vote on these things three times in order for them to take effect. So the second one is tonight. The third one will be on February 28th. So you may want to be here to see if that passes as well. So the property currently is bank-owned, and the bank has been cited for code violations as well. The property is now being managed by Cypress Services LLC, which was hired by the bank to clean up the property. So the city has spoken with Cypress on February 7th, and the city provided Cypress with all of the information that we previously have provided to the bank regarding the code violations. Police Department recovered a stolen vehicle from the site and within the last month, and they have also arrested somebody with an open warrant. Chief Ogden sent out a department-wide email to officers to watch that property for suspicious activity and evidence of criminal conduct. Chief Ogden also directed for this street to be patrolled regularly on your guys' behalf and for the street's behalf. The vehicles in the right-of-way are currently cited to be towed and should be towed tomorrow. The city council also is approving a second reading of the code, and that's what I was just saying. There's a second reading of some of the codings that needs to be updated. But your involvement in the city and bringing things to light has helped us hone some of these things, so I appreciate you being here, and thank you for coming. Yes. Yeah, and come back on February 28th, and you could possibly hear the passage of that code issue, okay? Thank you for the time. Now let's move on to new business. Request for council action, Mahler, WRF interim improvements project. Is there a staff report?
There is a staff report. Thank you, Mayor Coleman. Good evening, councilors. I have four items on here tonight, all related to the wastewater treatment plant. Three of those are related to procurement, and one of those is the final task order to complete design. Prior to doing that, I'd maybe give you guys an update of the project and where we're at as a team, and then I'll go into the individual items and for approval. So with that, if you remember, in September, we talked, we had a Phase One and a Phase Two. You're going to do a little bit more work. We went out and put that out for solicitation in September. We received bids back. The lowest bid was 25% over the engineer's estimate, and because of that, we were unable to award. With that said, we came back in November to discuss options. At that same time, we were having some upsets with the treatment plant, and we were having issues getting solids out of the plant. We had concerns about operating that plant over the next two, three years during construction. And so what we proposed at that time was to do some procurement of some long lead items. We would also purchase an emergency generator, at least get that order in, and we'd also do a sludge tank and some dewatering equipment, which would help us get sludge out of the plant on a more regular basis. So we did that. We created docs and plans, and we put those out. Prior to that, in January, West Coast completed their 60% design, and that was submitted to staff. Staff is finishing that review as we speak. So we look forward to that. In February, which is this month, early February, staff completed a letter of interest to WIFIA. WIFIA is the Water Infrastructure Finance and Innovation Act. It's basically EPA's revolving fund. They can lend up to 49% to the project and also offer additional grant funding. So we're searching additional grant funding with that. So that letter was sent out. We should hear back within 60 days. It's been roughly a couple of weeks. I know they've received it, and they're already looking at that application. Once we hear back, then we will be invited to formally apply to their program. So also, coming up in May, we're going to be... West Coast will be completing the preliminary environmental report. That environmental report will need to go to USDA and all the regulatory agencies to ensure that we're not basically creating an adverse effect onto the Santiam Creek. When that gets submitted and we get through that, that process could take about 135 days, which puts us into the summer. But prior to that, in May, West Coast will be submitting 90% design for staff review, and that'll be pencils down. We're done at that point, and we're basically just creating docs and finalizing our comments. So in June, end of June, final design will be complete, plans and docs completed, and submitted to the city. And that's all work inside the fence line excluding the outfall. We still have a little bit of work on the outfall. We weren't going to do an extensive amount of work into the river. We wanted to stay out of the river the whole time. But once we started meeting with USDA, it was apparent that they're going to want us to do a little bit more of an assessment instead of a review, and that's where this document comes in, and we have submitted that, or will be submitting that. Once we get through that review, they will either accept or give us comments back on that. But our idea is that we will have everything done after July 1st, somewhere in August area, with hopes to securing financing or start looking at financing in September. So that's kind of where we're at with the projects. Do you guys, do you have any questions on that at all? Like just timing and things that we're going through? So with that, I kind of want to roll into the first RCA, and it is for the wastewater treatment plant is improvement project. It is West Coast's final design task order. Staff is requesting council authorization to accept a West Coast and a proposal for final design. The contract proposal is not to exceed price of $1,560,873. Those funds in this year will be using the state earmark funds at $1,443,439. And then all the remaining work, which is $117,434, will be utilizing ARPA funds after July 1st. Our recommendation is to move forward with this task order, completing design and getting our docs by the end of June. And that's our recommendation for that one.
Any other questions of council for council? I'll entertain a motion.
So moved is recommended.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Julie, can you please call for the vote? Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
President Pro Tem Mahler?
Yes.
Councilor Gorley?
Yes.
Councilor Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilor Thorstedt?
Yes.
We have five ayes, no nays, and two absent. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, request for council action, the Mahler WRF electrical equipment procurement.
So this is the pre-procurement part of that of electric components. We're looking at an emergency generator, a main switchgear, and an automatic transfer switch. Staff is requesting to procure the owner-supplied electric equipment through the city's integrator of record, the automation group, which we call TAG. Again, November 8th, we came to you guys asking to move forward with that. TAG completed the design and solicited bids for the city. The bids were advertised December 15th, '22, and closed January 10th, 2023. TAG received two bids for the switchgear and automatic transfer switch, and TAG received four bids for the emergency generator. The cost of this task order is $898,364.03. Fiscal year '23 will utilize state earmark funds in the amount of $164,286.22. And then fiscal year, when we finally get to generator '24, '25, will utilize the remaining ARPA funds in the amount of $734.77.80. Staff recommends the option three, move to execute the procurement of electrical equipment for the wastewater treatment plant using TAG's efforts.
Thank you. Are there any questions from councilors? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved is recommended.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Julie, can you please call for a vote? Councilor Thorstedt?
Yes.
Councilor Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilor Gorley?
Yes.
President Pro Tem Mahler?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman? Yes. We have five ayes, no nays, and two absent. Moving on to the next one. Request for council action, Mahler, WRF sledge blend tank design.
So sledge blend tank procurement is a design build. Staff is requesting council to authorize a design build for the sludge tank. We worked with our engineers to come up with a plan. Again, this is to support the screw press and being able to pump sludge out of our clarifiers and get them into this tank, and then at our will with a new screw press, bring material out of that and process it at our time. West Coast completed design. They solicited bids for the city. That was done on December 15th, '22, and it closed January 24th and '23. We received one bid for the sludge tank from Baker Silo. The cost of that sledge blend tank is $1,117,490. And 490... Let me say that again. $1,117,490. The cost of that will be in the fiscal year '23.
Any questions from councilors? I'll entertain a motion.
So moved is recommended.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Julie, please call for the vote. Councilor Thorstedt?
Yes.
Councilor Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilor Gorley?
Yes.
President Pro Tem Mahler?
Yes.
And Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
That's five ayes, no nays, and two absent. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is the request for council action, Mahler, WRF dewatering equipment procurement.
Sounding like a broken record here. So our last one is the watering equipment, and this is basically the screw press that will be used in conjunction with the sledge blend tank. Again, we came to you guys November 8th. TAG completed the design, solicited bids for the city. The bids were advertised December 15th, and it closed January 10th, '23. We received again one bid from a company, FFKC Company. The cost of that bid was $617,257, with an additional $87,664 for TAG to provide control equipment and integration of those components into our SCADA system. Staff recommends to move forward and execute the contract and TAG's task order to complete this work. And that would be everything for the art improvement project.
Great. Any questions from councilors? So, Madam Mayor, Greg, did you say $87,000 or $87,000?
I probably have stumbled. Let me say that again.
I just want to make sure that's clear. Thank you.
It was $87,664 combined.
Thank you.
In addition to the $617,257. Total cost, $704,921.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved is recommended.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Julie, please call for the vote. Councilor Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilor Gorley?
Yes.
President Pro Tem Mahler?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Councilor Thorstedt?
Yes.
That's five ayes, no nays, and two absent. So moving on to the next item, a request for council action, resolution number two for 2023.
You have a RCA, and it deals with recreational vehicles, RVs, parking, and the resolution just basically sets forth council's approval of several signs that are proposed to be put up at the entrance to Sweet Home. There's already poles there, I've been told, and this would just be an additional sign on our existing poles, I believe. And the sign of approximately, or substantially the form is set forth in the materials of what we're thinking about, and that's what the resolution's about, is just to support the RV ordinance that we just passed with signage.
Okay, do we have any questions from councilors regarding this resolution? I'll entertain a motion.
I move to pass the resolution as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Julie, please call for the vote. Councilor Gorley?
Yes.
President Pro Tem Mahler?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Councilor Thorstedt?
Yes.
Councilor Sanchez?
Yes.
We have five ayes, no nays, and two absent. Is this something that needs to be read now?
It's just a resolution.
Good. Moving on to ordinance bills, request for council action and first reading of ordinance bills. We have ordinance number five for 2023. Okay. Ordinance number six for 2023. I have two on here. I have a five and a six. Number five is listed as RV travel, and number six is the MFUs. Is it six and seven, then?
It's six and seven.
So let's move on to ordinance number six.
This is an ordinance also dealing with the RV and RV legislation that we passed. The RCA sort of sets it out what it's about, but basically, it's a system to... Procedure to tow vehicles. In our ordinances already and in the state law, basically, when a city or the state tows vehicles, there's a procedure that you have to follow. And so this sets out the procedure that we're going to follow when we have to actually tow the vehicle. The RV in this particular case is what we're talking about.
Do we have any questions from councilors? No? I'll entertain a motion.
A motion to move for first reading.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to move to first reading. Julie, roll call, please. Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
President Pro Tem Mahler?
Yes.
Councilor Gorley?
Yes.
Councilor Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilor Thorstedt?
Yes.
Five ayes, no nays, and two absent. Go ahead with the reading.
Ordinance bill number six for 2023. Ordinance bill underscore 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 underscore. Sweet Home ordinance creating SHMC Section 10.08.033 pertaining to recreational vehicle custody towing disposition with expediency clause. Whereas the city of Sweet Home has recently passed by ordinance SHMC 10.28.028 that restricts recreational vehicle parking on certain public streets and public alleys and this ordinance pertaining to the custody, towing and disposal of a recreational vehicle found in violation of said SHMC subsection should be passed as soon as possible to help identify said SHMC subsection and protect the public health, safety, and welfare. Therefore, an expediency clause is included in this ordinance. Now therefore, the city of Sweet Home does ordain as follows. Section one, SHMC Section 10.08.033 is titled hereby to read as recreational vehicle towing and is created to read as follows. A, after forty-eight hours, this is in place of a twenty-four hour period for notice as set forth for abandoned vehicle in ORS 819, a recreational vehicle that is in violation of SHMC 10.28.028, may be taken into custody, towed and disposed of as a, or an abandoned vehicle under SHMC 10.08.030G. Except for recreational vehicle as they posted, I D attaching notice to the recreational vehicle as part of the above abandoned vehicle process for this subsection and police report home. Code enforcement report has been made verified same and the time for the above process has expired and thereafter, except during appeal as prescribed therein. If the recreational vehicle is not anywhere within the city of Sweet Home under compliance with SHMC 10.28.028, the recreational vehicle may be taken into custody, towed and disposed of pursuant to SHMC 10.08.030G, as a, or a traffic hazard vehicle. ORS 819.196 does not apply to the above subsection. Be notwithstanding the above provisions in this section and subsection 10.08.030G1, no recreational vehicle shall be towed as a traffic hazard based on prior abandoned vehicle police report for code enforcement report as stated in this section more than one year after the date of the posted notice on the recreational vehicle. Two, no recreational vehicle shall be towed as a traffic hazard based on prior abandoned vehicle police report for code enforcement report as stated in this section with a requirement that has not had the opportunity to contest the abandoned vehicle process herein. Three, all hearings for an abandoned vehicle and a hazard vehicle shall be supported by reliable, provenant, provenant and substantial evidence on the whole record. C, no municipal court violation citation shall be issued for violation of SHMC 10.28.028 for the time of the posted and appeal time. D, before municipal court violation citation for violating SHMC 10.28.028 is issued a twenty-four hour notice of the requirements of said subsection shall be given to the requirement entered. Section two, expediency clause, it is hereby adjudged and declared by the Sweet Home City Council that existing conditions are such that this ordinance is needed to be in effect at the time and date of passage by the city council and approval by the mayor, and it is hereby declaring an emergency to promote the public health, safety, and welfare. Passed by the council and approved by the mayor, this underscore 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 data underscore 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 20.3. Underscore 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 underscore.
Mayor attests city manager-ex officio city recorder.
Thank you so much. I will entertain a motion to move this for second reading tonight since it has an expediency clause, and we are unanimous in the vote.
I second.
We have a motion in a second. Julie, call for the vote, please.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
President Protem Mahler? Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Thorstedt?
Yes.
We have five ayes, no nays, and two absent. To read it by title only for the second reading.
Ordinance bill number six for 2023, ordinance number blank, Sweet Home ordinance creating SHMC Section 10.08.033 pertaining to recreational vehicle custody towing and disposition with expediency clause.
Thank you. And now I would like to hear a motion to move to the third reading on February 28th.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Julie, call for the vote, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Thorstedt?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
President Protem Mahler?
Yes.
We have five ayes, no nays, and two absent to move it forward to the third reading on February 28th. Moving on to the next ordinance, ordinance number seven.
Madam Mayor, this is actually a land use public hearing and was noticed as that, so we need to have the public hearing first, and then I'll give the staff report as part of that public hearing.
Thank you so much. So I'm going to open this up for a public hearing at 7:04. For all public hearings, I need a declaration from all councilors on bias, conflict of interest, or ex parte communication. Counselor Thorstedt? Counselor Gorley?
No.
Counselor Mahler?
No.
And Counselor Sanchez?
None.
And none for me? The floor is open for...
Yes, the staff report. So this is an item that has been discussed by the planning commission for a couple of months now, and staff, based on their direction, did some research on other cities in our area and how they have regulated the development of mobile food unit courts or pods. There's a couple of different names, but the name that we settled on for this is a mobile food unit pod. This also has been a topic at the front counter at KED because we've had some folks who have come interested in developing something similar to The Barn in Albany or Tolman Brewing in Lebanon, and we have no real rules for how to deal with those requests. And so the enclosed ordinance was developed, presented to the planning commission. They held a public hearing in front of the planning commission, and they voted on the application, approved it, and recommended that the city council adopt it. The ordinance, it's important to note what the ordinance covers and what it does not cover. The ordinance does not cover any drive-through facilities such as the Coffee Hut or similar facilities that may have originally been built on a trailer platform but have since been permanently installed. Those types of facilities are covered by building code and are commercial enterprises that were inspected as part of that development process, and they don't fall under the categories here. This is strictly dealing with mobile food units that are, that remain mobile, that move from place to place, and they may park at a certain place for an extended period of time, but they are not installed permanently to those places. They are still capable of leaving. And sites that are developed to house those types of vehicles. It's also important to note that a single mobile food unit is treated differently than a group of mobile food units. The requirements in this proposed ordinance for a single mobile food unit are very minimal. Essentially, if that mobile food unit is placed on a private property for an extended period of time, yes, they would still have a permit, but it would be limited to essentially just giving us a rough site plan of how they're hooking up to facilities, to water and sewer. Are they having a restroom, which is not required for a single mobile food unit? Are they having any eating areas? And if so, are those lit at night if the place is open at night, and are they ADA accessible? That's pretty much it for a... Oh, and if they have a generator, they have to place it where it's not too close to the neighboring property, and it doesn't spew fumes at the patrons. They're fairly easy to comply with. When it comes to a group of such mobile food units, it is assumed that the property owner is developing a site that would house multiple of these units. And in that case, there would be more requirements in that to make those ADA accessible, you do have some pathways that are necessary to make sure that there's adequate clearance between the mobile food units. If there is a shared dining area on the site, whether it's outdoors or indoors, it does need to be ADA accessible, lit when it's dark. There is a requirement for restrooms or for an agreement with a neighboring property for restroom access. Essentially, just rules that would ensure that the place is a pleasant experience for the patrons, but also not an eyesore or a problem for their neighbors. I think that covers most of the rules there. It's there in the ordinance, and if there are anything that you've read through here that you're concerned about, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. I'm going to open the floor up. The floor is open for public comment. Those who testify must be recognized by the mayor, be on microphone, and state their full name and address for the record. No one shall be disorderly, disruptive, or abusive during the hearing. Testimony must be relevant. Redundancy or repetition is to be avoided. So is there anybody present who would like to come forward? Is there anyone online who would like to speak to the matter? Okay, I will close this public hearing at 7:10. And is there any discussion from councilors?
I do have a question, and I don't know if it would be for the attorney or for our city manager, Madam Mayor, as far as discussion or approval or anything this evening. Am I need to abstain because I own a food trailer? I know I brought that topic up. Okay.
I don't think you do either. I mean, you already stated that you do own a food truck, and it could be argued, too, that where your truck is already in place, that this wouldn't even apply, that it could be grandfathered in.
Yeah, just wanted to make sure that I didn't have to abstain.
Thank you for asking the counselor or the question.
Madam Mayor, may I? Okay, there's a couple of things that I want to ask for clarification on and maybe offer some of my ideas. I'm concerned that if we have food type events such as the barbecue that's going to be going on, I just feel as though three days is too short of a timeframe, potentially if we're going to open up Quarry Park to have more foodie type events where we bring a lot of vendors in. I would like it to be five or seven days without having to comply with this. And then additionally...
Can I address that one first?
Yep.
That scenario is actually exempt from this ordinance. If there is a event that goes through the special events process, that is a public special event, then that is envisioned that that event would handle approval of any vendors, and it wouldn't go through this.
Okay, thank you. I did see the special events section, but I wasn't sure that it was inclusive with all type of things. I just read farmer's market, so...
Right. Well, and the farmer's market does a special event also. So there, it could be, it could be the, you know, what we've done in the past. It could be the jamboree. It could be what's been done in the past with Radiator Supply House. It could be the Harvest Festival that the city holds. Could be a different festival that is held on city property or in city rights of way. Those types of events would have a different approval process that they already have to go through because they're on public property and are inviting the public in, and the food vendors involved there are typically self-contained and in a different category. So they would be reviewed through that process.
Okay, thank you. And then next, I want to know how you came up with the definition of a pod as two, because I feel as though that could be a barrier to setting up shop where two or more have to comply with these certain types of ordinance changes, and there's only two businesses trying to pool their money together. So I think it would, my opinion, would be better if it was three or more, five or more. There's not a lot of space in town to set up something like this, so if two pods, two units are forced to do this type of extra.
The main thought behind that is that when you have a single unit, it is typically either the owner of the property has put a single unit there, or there's a single unit that is leasing a space to put their unit more or less permanently. When you have two or more, it's assumed that that means that the property owner is leasing spaces to at least one more than a unit that they already own. And so it's become more of a landlord-tenant type development where spaces are leased to a mobile food unit. That was the thinking behind it, that when you have more than one, that's when you start to have people staying longer to eat and enjoy themselves. Then the longer people stay and the more seating you have, the more likely they're going to need a bathroom, et cetera. And so that's kind of how that thinking came through. Certainly reasonable minds can differ on what that number should be. This is what the planning commission arrived at, and it probably can be changed. I believe for something like that, it would probably have to be referred back to the planning commission with the instruction that that would be something that we'd want them to weigh in on and look at to see if that would affect any other parts of the code, but it certainly is potential to be changed.
I don't necessarily want to hold this up because I love the brewing in Lebanon and what's going on in Albany and Salem, and I really want that to happen in this town. But I don't want just a couple of food trucks who are trying to eke out a living to provide some good service have this barrier. So that's my only concern.
I understand. So far, the interest that we've had from people who have been asking about this, there has not been anybody that's been asking about two units sharing a site. It's always been like three or more.
Okay.
And those sites with three or more, it's been someone talking about not running the food trucks themselves, but simply leasing out the space to multiple food trucks. We do have a couple of sites in town where there is a single food truck operating, and this, while this would apply to them, they're already in compliance with the rules that are in place.
Okay, that's the last thing I wanted to say. Would this affect any existing food trucks that are here?
To my knowledge, and from what I've seen, all of the food trucks that are operating in town, I know of three, and they are all in compliance with, already with this.
Okay, thank you.
The challenge with the food trucks that I've found in discussions I've had, it's a great concept. In Lebanon, I love Lebanon's concept. Love to see it here in town. Talking with a few other food trailer owners and the situation in Lebanon, Lebanon's, that is struggling there, too, believe it or not. And a lot of it is because of fees that they're having to pay, but on top of that, the lease that they have to pay every month. And then with the rising food prices, it is making it a challenge for it, so...
Well, that's why I just didn't want to have more costs to make this dream happen for our town and the people than necessary, so...
That would be the main thing, is any additional fees that gets tacked on, that would be a concern because it is, it's hard to make a profit with trailers with everything that's been tacked on, and the food prices mainly, so...
Any other questions from councilors? Okay.
I should add also that this does not actually affect anyone who wants to have a food truck within the public right of way, if it's a self-contained unit. Often in cities, you have a food truck come through and park, open for the lunch hour, or it's one that moves around on a regular basis. Maybe they let the people know through social media where they're going to be, et cetera. If anybody wanted, had a self-contained unit and wanted to park for a day or two, this wouldn't actually stop them from doing so. They would not fall under it because they're largely self-contained.
Like when Chick-fil-A was supposed to come to Holly.
Right? I never saw it. I was looking for lunch. Yeah.
And if we wanted to have Food Truck Fridays, which is something I'm trying to make become an actual thing here at City Hall or at Stinky Park or something along those lines, this would not impact that either.
That would be a special event or something?
It would be a special event, or they'd all be entirely self-contained and just happen, they just have to follow the parking rules, so...
Cool, then I'm for it.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve the application, LA 22-02, and conduct a first reading of the ordinance.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Julie, please call for the vote.
Counselor Thorstedt?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Protem Mahler?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Okay, we have five ayes, no nays, and two absent.
City of Sweet Home ordinance bill number underscore 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 for 2023 ordinance, underscore 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 underscore. And ordinance heading Sweet Home Municipal Code Section... Section 17.75, Mobile Food Units, and Amendment of Sweet Home Municipal Code Section 17... Section 17.16.020, Section 17.18.020, 17.20.020, 17.25.020, and Section 17.26.020, Mobile Food Unit or Mobile Food Unit Pod, Subject 2, Chapter 17.75. Whereas the City of Sweet Home seeks to ensure the safety of mobile food units placed within the city and whereas the planning commission held a public hearing on February 2nd, 2023 for the proposed amendments to Sweet Home Municipal Code, Section 17.75, Section 17.16.020, Section 17.18.020, Section 17.20.020, Section 17.25.020, Section 17.26.020, and whereas the planning commission followed the text amended procedures under Sweet Home Municipal Code, Chapters 1, 7.11, 6.020 Application, February 29th, towers and duties, and has provided a report to the city council above the recommendation to consider the proposed text changes, and whereas the city council held a public hearing on these proposed text changes on February 14th, 2023, and now therefore, the City of Sweet Home home does ordain as follows. Section 1, Sweet Home Municipal Code, SHMC, Chapter 17.75, Title Mobile Food Unit is created to read as follows. 17.75 Mobile Food Units, 17.75.010 Definition. For the purposes of the Mobile Food Unit, MFU, code, the following definitions apply. Terms, phrases, orders, abbreviations, and derivatives used, but not specifically defined in this section, except for the terms, common accepted in the meaning. Mobile Food Unit, any vehicle that is self-propelled or that can be pulled or pushed down a sidewalk, street, highway, or waterway on which food is prepared, processed, or diverted, or which is used in 7.75 code, is openly reserved. Mobile Food Unit Pod, a group of two or more mobile food units on the same legal parcel of land as shown through the county. Property, legal parcel of land on which the MFU is located. And assertion, enclosure, unrelated structure, or shelter, with or without side walls or drops, constructed of fabric or pliable materials supported in any manner except by air or the contact it protects. Unrelated structure, construction, enclosure, or shelter with or without side walls or drops, constructed of fabric or pliable materials supported by a central pole or poles. Ways, any byproduct of the activities associated with MFU included, but not limited to black water, gray water, bats, oils, and grease. 17.75.020 general provisions. For the mobile, and that was I like, and that is that. Home, the city, the law, NFU, code, 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 laws, right? regulations, set forth by the city, or any, and then have to provide, and 17.75.020, NFU, code, NFU, part, for any, right? The best example of what will create NFU, part, for the NFU, 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 shall have required exempt residence, 17.75.060. Operations of NFU, part, in the city, for the NFU, part, for any, right? And for the NFU, 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 shall have required NFU, for the NFU, for the NFU, for the NFU, for the NFU, 17.75.050, for the NFU, for the NFU, for the NFU, for the NFU, NFU, part, for the NFU, 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 shall operate within the context of all of the, for the NFU, for the NFU, and shall have access to, for the NFU, 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 where I like, tops, all that, and then, for the NFU, 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 the second, 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 structures shall be that, and the, from public right of way. Setbacks for any accessory structures inside, through, or the minimum standard for accessory structures, in the, which are possible. All NFU, tops, that are registered today. Small vendors shall be able to, during non-operating hours, register from the hand line. Facilities for hot, code, like one, so, and hand line, period, for the NFU. Register from the, like, one, and, 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 to allow, on, like, that, to utilize the register facility. And register shall be free from view of the public right of way. And the register, for the NFU, for the NFU. One, shall have required, except, for, 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 17.75.060, for the NFU, 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 NFU, shall need, for, 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 and, that NFU may operate, city, but, for, 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 NFU, which are closed, or which shall not require to obtain an NFU permit. And NFU may operate within any special event, such as a public party or public technical, that holds a valid special event related to the city as to fault without NFU permit. The entity that coded by the city as to fault is that for an NFU permit. The NFU shall complete any required application and obtain the proper approval directly from a specific city as to fault without the closing of that. That NFU, in the public right of way, is that so long, that NFU, above, against Sweet Home, not for, 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 17.75.070, for the NFU, for the NFU, for the NFU, for the NFU, the application, correct, is done, that, 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 17.75.070, NFU, for the NFU, for the NFU, for the NFU, for the NFU, any time, for NFU, for the 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 NFU, that, 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 circulation, management, people, that, 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 the additional information shown provided by the, that, 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 the other, that, 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 17.75.090, NFU, for the NFU, for the NFU, for the NFU, for the NFU, application for a permanent, for, 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 that, 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 for, 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 that, 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 approved of viability, for, 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 that, 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 be, come to all necessary permits, such as, 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 additional information shown provided, such as, such as, such as, such as, by the city managers, or the, that, 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 application is permitted, and I don't, but, 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 but. And, 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 water, and, 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 that, 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 you, shovel, the, 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 17.75.110, NFU, and, 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 outside, four, shall, 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 be, 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 17.75.040, or 17.75.050, for the NFU, for the NFU, for the NFU, for the NFU, all that, 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 for, 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 be, 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 structures may be fully closed. Structures shall apply all local and state identity, including, but not limited to, for, 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 and, 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 she, 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 are, and, 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 17.75.050, NFU, and, 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 that's, 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 generators showing, be, 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 that, 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 if 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 that,
Thank you. If everybody's awake, I would entertain a motion to have this moved to second reading